Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees today, January 27th, 2014, to order. Will you please have the roll?
Roll call, trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis-Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson is absent. Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Village President Turpik.
Here.
Also in attendance Barry Lewis, village administrator, Stephen Rother, village council, Adam Lerner, deputy village administrator, and myself, Chanel Smith. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may be taken.
Thank you. So we have one resolution to begin to go into executive session.
Resolution 2014-20, resolution authorizing an executive session at the January 27th, 2014, meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. We had two items listed and one additional item, acting village president, which is a personnel matter, historic preservation commission appointments, which is a personnel matter, and Irvington Ave. appointments, which is also a personnel matter. Do I have a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. President.
More?
Could we add two more? One would be Oprah exceptions, attorney-client privilege, and the other is South Orange Rescue Squad construction issue attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Do I have a motion for executive session with those two additions?
Motion to move.
Second.
Okay. Moved by trustee Schnall, seconded by trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Thank you. We'll be back out here at eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. Could we have the roll please?
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Colin.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Levinson is absent. Trustee Schnell.
Here.
Village President.
Here. All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, a couple of announcements to get us started. Just a reminder, we've begun with kind of the soft launch of SO Connect or public stuff. And this is a platform that you can use from your smartphone, an iPhone, or an Android, or from the website. And it allows you to submit basically non-emergency requests to the village. So like a pothole in the street, or a light out, or a code enforcement issue at a neighbor's house. That's a really way to be popular on your block. And one of the things that we're trying to do is make it easier for residents to report these kind of problems. And what it actually does for us, once you submit the problem on the website, or via the mobile app on the phone, it actually goes into a whole workflow backend for us with our department heads and our staff. So instead of emails flying all over the place, it tracks it, it sends you back a tracking number, a ticket number, so you can check up on the status of it. And it just makes the whole process a lot more efficient from our end, and hopefully allows us to complete some of these tasks in a more timely fashion for you, and hold us accountable to some of the standards that we'd like to set going forward for how fast we should be able to A, receive, and then B, actually complete these requests. So if you haven't tried it, you can download it from the iTunes Store or the Google Play Store and check it out. If you have any issues with it, definitely let us know because we're still working out a couple of kinks with it before we kind of do the full launch. But it's a really great service. We're really happy to be able to bring this to the community.
Mr. President, can you give them the name again?
Yeah, it's SO Connect. If you search either of the stores for it, SO Connect, you can do that, or southorange.org/311. And you can do it from the website as well. And ideally, this also allows our employees that if you do call Village Hall and you have a complaint, our employees have access to the same system. They can type your request right in. You don't have to get forwarded around to different departments or anything like that. So we're definitely excited for some of the efficiencies this can bring to us. The next is a couple of Container Day dates. The hours for Container Day, it's 8:00 a.m. to 1:45 p.m., and after 1:30, they will close the gates. It's on the following, excuse me, the following Saturdays. April 26th, May 17th, June 21st, July 26th, August 23rd, and September 27th. So many household items that you no longer want, you can take down to DPW. It's a 300 Walton Ave. This is for South Orange residents only. You need to make sure to bring a proof of residency. And there's no commercial vehicles allowed. If you need more information about that, you can call 973-378-7741. We're still looking for volunteers. We've gotten a lot of great applications. We've got some exciting committees ramping up. But we're always looking for more people to be involved, and we still do have some openings on some of our committees and boards and opportunities to volunteer. So if you are interested in that and interested in learning a little bit more about what's available, you can go to the website at southorange.org and find the volunteering link on the left-hand side. You just fill out a quick form, put some of the committees that you might be interested in, and we'll get back to you with what's available. Hopefully, folks have heard that PSENG has ordered some more proactive tree trimming and vegetation trimming around the village, and mostly around all the power lines that they operate. So Jaffa Tree Service is the contractor that's performing the work. And you don't need to make an appointment or anything. They will come to you. If you're home at the time, they may stop in and ask you a couple of questions. If not, they'll leave a little tag on your door with a way to follow up. And they'll be doing this Monday through Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So if you do see them out, if you do see that tree service out, that's what they are doing. And if you do miss them, you can find the information on the card to get back to them about it. And also a reminder about Zipcar. Since we've brought Zipcar to the village, we've seen a lot of people, a lot more people sign up and start using it. Definitely gone downtown sometimes and seen both the spaces empty, people taking the Zipcars out. If you're interested in it, it's a great way to save a little bit of money, especially if you're thinking about buying a second car, or even a first car, and you're not sure you really need it as often as you might. Car sharing is a great, more environmentally sustainable way to still get around and actually save a lot of money at the end of the day. So the membership, I think, is $6 a month is what it starts at. And it's a pretty cheap hourly rate as well for going to the mall, doing some shopping, visiting people, anything like that. And if you want more information about that and how to sign up, you can go to zipcar.com. So those are all the announcements tonight. We have a proclamation that I'm going to read for a Seton Hall nursing student who has done something particularly great, and I think she's here in the audience somewhere. So this proclamation is full of embarrassing childhood stories. So I'll just read this here. Whereas Seton Hall University nursing student Hillary Sylon spent her 22nd birthday performing 22 random acts of kindness. And whereas Ms. Sylon's personal birthday mission expanded into a campus-wide movement this past holiday season, inspired by her Goodwill tour appropriately titled "The 12 Acts of Christmas Kindness." And whereas Seton Hall University President Gabriel Esteban announced the campaign of kindness at the university's annual tree lighting ceremony, where more than 1,000 students, faculty, and staff and area residents watched the 60-foot tree lit up with over 40,000 lights. Whereas the movement spread quickly through social media with more than 350 people pledging online to participate. Excuse me. And whereas the Dame Sylon turned 22 on July 23rd, 2013, she enlisted the help of close friends to document and aid her mission, taking nine and a half hours across two states, completing 22 acts of kindness, ranging from donating blood, paying the toll for four cars at a toll bridge, giving cold bottled water to pump attendants at four gas stations, loading groceries for an elderly couple visiting from Florida and at a local Walmart, giving supplies to a nearby no-kill animal shelter, delivering baked goods to neighbors, and balloons to Belvedere Elementary students purchasing grocery gift cards to give to the next person in line. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Village President of the Township of South Orange Village, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire Village of South Orange, our sincerest congratulations are hereby extended to Hillary for her commendable efforts demonstrating good faith and humanitarianism through random acts of kindness. So if you'd like to come up and say a couple of words, and I'm sure there are some trustees who'd like to speak too.
Hi, everyone.
I have to talk into the mic.
Hi, I'm Hillary Sapon, and thank you so very much for this. This is very, very nice. As I said, I am a student at Seton Hall University, and this past summer I did 22 random acts of kindness for my 22nd birthday. And when I did it, I really didn't think that all this publicity would come for it. I really did it because I wanted to be genuine, and it really did come from my heart, because I just wanted to do something nice. So when I got back to school, my university was very supportive in my actions, and they wanted to help me create a movement from it and participate with it. So we created Shoe Kindness, where we created a website. People could pledge to either participate in 12 acts of their own Christmas kindness, or pledge to talk about if they were a recipient of kindness and whatnot. So like they said, we had over 350 pledges, which is more than I ever expected. And together, I really want to make a change. With this whole movement, I have two goals. One of them is to do what you can. You don't have to do 22 acts of kindness. You don't even have to do 12. You can really do one act of kindness a day, and it can really make a difference in the world. My second goal of this was to make it second nature for people. You can start off with a goal. Today, I pledged to do, you know, three acts of kindness to make a difference. But I really wanted to make it second nature to where you don't even have to think about it. It's just something that you just naturally do. So I really hope that with the genuineness in people's hearts, that this can keep going without doing a huge movement. Because we can only do so much by ourselves, but we can do so much more when we come together as a team. So thank you so much. This really means a lot.
Very brief. Hillary, I'm trustee Colin. It's good to meet you in person today. Just to what you've done, it was very inspirational, I'm sure, on the Seton Hall campus, but to the entire South Orange community as well. Seton Hall, on their Twitter account, asked, you know, all their followers to take the pledge to do 12 acts of kindness during the holiday season. And I think I certainly took the pledge, and it made me very much remember what the holidays were about. But as Hillary pointed out, wait, I think I lost.
It's like the Grammys, you're done.
Exactly. The point is continuing the acts of kindness so that it's not just about something during the holidays. And Hillary, I just think you embody everything that Seton Hall wants its students to be and become. So thank you so much for what you did.
Hillary, I echo trustee Colin. And I'm really appreciative of your 22 acts of kindness and the ability to encourage other people to do the same. You have contributed to what I call my beloved committee, I mean, my beloved community, our beloved community of South Orange, and for that, I thank you.
Great. Thanks again. And next up, I'd like to invite the Community Relations Committee to come up to present our Villager of the Month.
Thank you, Alex. Tonight, the Community Relations Committee is delighted to honor South Orange resident Margaret Peggy Farah as Villager of the Month. We recognize Peggy for her work with local students in the People-to-People Ambassador Program. Ever since responding to a need for a chaperone, as her own daughter was about to embark on her third People-to-People program. For the past 12 years, Peggy Farah has chaperoned a group of students, either middle school or high school age, on a three-week adventure to places in Europe, China, as well as New Zealand, Australia, and Pacific Islands, and I probably forgot a few. All the children in her groups live in Essex, Union, or Hudson Counties. And many are and have been local South Orange residents. Peggy first meets the students in the fall of each year, when she interviews prospects for the program, most of whom have been recommended by their teachers. After student selection, starting in January, she meets monthly with the kids as they have orientation on history, community service, and even U.S. civics to prepare them to be the student ambassadors People-to-People is all about. In addition, she counsels the kids on how to effectively fundraise for their trips in the most creative ways. By the time Peggy and her group of about 40 students and three other teachers embark in the summer for their three-week adventure, everyone is very well-prepped. It's very hard to capture the enthusiasm Peggy has for the People-to-People experience. But a short conversation with her conveys very quickly how amazing she finds the kids, and how fulfilling she finds spending three weeks each summer watching her kids experience a jam-packed schedule as they change before her eyes into responsible, mature adolescents. As they learn that people are the same wherever they live in our world. Chaperoning a People-to-People trip involves much, much more than counting heads, keeping passports, tickets, and bed checks. Peggy is busy all day long participating with her students, whether they're on a scavenger hunt in the Louvre, rappelling down a tower in a Seesee, or a castle wall in Wales, snorkeling in the Great Barrier Reef, running up the Great Wall of China, or, she says she does this, chopping a block of wood with her bare hands during the full-on team-building activity. When they're on the bus, Peggy keeps her students awake with bus games, especially created by her daughter Kim, a three-year People-to-People alum. The students are encouraged to keep daily journals with suggested lists of topics. The journals provide the kids with a record of their experiences, and they give the chaperones another way to evaluate the participation of each student. The People-to-People program was initiated in 1956 by President Dwight Eisenhower as a way to contribute to lasting peace in the post-World War II world. The first program sent student ambassadors abroad in 1962. Today, the mission is to bridge cultural and political borders through education and exchange, creating global citizens, and making the world a better place for future generations. Peggy Farah has personally effected this mission for more than 400 New Jersey students during the past 12 years. The pride she takes in her students is palpable as she describes their adventures and reactions, from their home visits with host families, to their conversations with political leaders in their host countries. From their service projects, which are a part of each trip, to their study and feeding of wild dolphins, and from the evaluation forms she does for each of her students after the trip, to the letters of recommendation she continues to write for former students. Peggy and her husband Al have lived in South Orange during their entire married life. Their three sons and daughter are all products of the South Orange Maplewood School System. Peggy and Al have both been very active in many local activities, which Robin Patrick has noted very well in the Gaslight. Peggy taught CCD at Our Lady of Sorrows, was active in her PTAs, and was a scout leader for 17 years. With a degree in social work and her experience as a classroom aide, her volunteer work and mothering of four children, Peggy is eminently well-prepared for her People-to-People trips as she takes her students on their international explorations each summer. This summer, she and her kids and three other chaperones are off to France, England, and Italy. The scope of the itinerary and the activities are beyond impressive, and Peggy is ready for every single part. Peggy Farah certainly embodies the spirit of People-to-People in helping to create global citizens by exposing New Jersey students to other people and their countries and cultures year after year. The Village of South Orange is proud and honored to call her our Villager of the Month.
I'd like to thank the village, everyone, for this honor. Like Nani said, I've lived in town for 36 years. My husband and I have been involved in many different activities, all related to children. I'm sure we'll continue volunteering for a long time. And I have to say, I have to thank my neighbors and family who all came out to support me tonight. They're very funny, but since the Gaslight came out, I've been called the bomb. The bomb is here, the bomb is coming. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And People-to-People, it's just... And People-to-People, it's just a gift to me. I feel so honored to be able to be involved with the program. It has a wonderful message. It helps children to understand that the world is a small place and they are global citizens. And I get to go all over the world, which is quite amazing. So, I love it. So, thank you very much. Very honored.
Thank you so much for all the hard work that you do. And thank you to the Community Relations Committee for, again, putting this together. We really appreciate it.
An incredible selection today.
Absolutely. And all the friends and family that came out, you guys are required to stay for the whole nine-hour meeting. So, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to public comments. And I'll start with the list we have here. Andrew Weinberger? And if you could just state your name and address for the record, and if everybody could just try and keep their comments to three minutes so we can get to everyone tonight.
Thank you. Andy Weinberger, Prospect Street in South Orange. I've lived here for 26 years on Prospect Street with my wife, who is a former villager of the month, Sue Willis. And we're very proud of our son's education in South Orange, too.
I'm speaking tonight in favor of the establishment of doctors' offices on certain streets in South Orange. I'm doing this as a concerned citizen, resident, and as a doctor who could not find office space in here, in town, several years ago. I'm also, you should know, in contract negotiations with Atlantic Health, but I'd be in favor of this anyway. In November 2009, there was a planning meeting for South Orange in this building, in which the new plans were announced. And at that meeting, I got up and said that I was very disappointed because I had been unable to find space in South Orange to move my medical practice from Milburn. I actually ended up in West Orange because there were very few suitable and really none that I could find offices in town. I said at that point, I hope the town would include physician offices in future plans. Well, we now have that opportunity. I believe that adding physicians' offices to town will improve the health of our neighbors and improve the economic status of downtown. Medical offices are respected facilities that will help draw people to town and generate ancillary business. It may bring businesses to the several closed storefronts, some of which I've watched for 15 years on South Orange Avenue with no change, just a slight alteration of the plastic bags. And I do recommend allowing these offices. I can't think of any reason they shouldn't be allowed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there is some sound coming that's disruptive. Did you hear it, or is it just me?
A little, although if it's on with Steve, then it's fine with me.
Okay.
It's in the lobby.
Laura Atwell?
Hi, good evening. I'm Laura Atwell. I live on South Ridgewood Road in South Orange, and my husband and I have been here for 11 years. I'm also speaking in favor of the change to allow medical offices in South Orange. I do work for Overlook Hospital, but I do find that my doctors are not in town. I go to doctors in Westfield and New Providence and Springfield and do have the opportunity when I'm in those towns for office appointments, doing shopping in those towns. So, I would agree with Dr. Weinberger that, you know, you do spend money, you spend time in town, not just going to physicians' offices, but also using the other services in town. The town of Summit, which did let go of Summit Medical Group, which then moved out, I think can talk to you about the impact of medical offices very well because they lost a huge amount of foot traffic, not only to the stores that they used to support, but to the restaurants as well. So, I would encourage you to support the change and to allow doctors' offices in South Orange. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
She was...
Okay.
I don't know if you still have a sign here.
Our topic here is Hillary, so if you'd like to talk about it, feel free. No, it's okay.
Good evening. My name is John McGriff, a resident of South Orange for 23 years. Two sons gone through the school system, and I welcome them back after their college experience to, as they have said themselves, to stay in the South Orange area and mature with the city as my wife and I have. I am pro-expansion...
Speak a little closer to the mic.
I am pro-expansion of the availability of space for medical services. I look for the personal convenience of doing what I normally do on a Saturday and Sunday and staying and spending my money here in South Orange for the benefit of the village. And I think it would become an added asset to expand space for this need for the residents of South Orange and nearby municipalities, for people to increase foot traffic and take care of something that's very, very important, whether it's expanding their family or just the maintenance of their own health, and have the convenience of doing that here in the village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else on the sign-up sheet, but if anybody else is interested in speaking, you'd just like to come forward and just remember to state your name and address, please.
Hi, George Berkeley. I live in South Orange at 28 West Third Street. I also have a business in town, the UPS Storey, which you may know about. I am in support of the medical offices in the village as well. I really, really believe having medical offices in walking distance, because I live in town, I work in town, would be a great support to this town. I cannot fathom that it won't help the town and the other businesses with other people coming from outlying districts or villages to our place to walk around, have dinner, have lunch, and then go see the doctor, or the other way around. It can only be of benefit and of booms. Currently, I drive to Milburn, Springfield, Union, and all the way up to Westchester Medical Center in New York for doctors. I'd prefer to walk in town. I hope you support this. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't know I needed to sign up. I'm actually from Maplewood. I hope that's all right for me to speak. I support everything that's already been said.
Could you just state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Lisa here. It's H-E-H-R, and I live at 8 Marilyn in Maplewood. I live with my daughter and her family. We have two cats. And I bring our cats over here to get their vaccinations. I would love to come here and get my own shots. Need I say more?
Hi, my name is Brian Nesson, 361 Irving Avenue, and I am speaking out in favor of the change, which...
Just a little closer to the mic, please.
Yeah, sure. Do you have the text of it available? I don't know if you could summarize now?
Yeah, we'll summarize it when we get... And I don't know if you have any extra copies printed out?
We don't have...
Just so I could speak a little more intelligently about what I'm in favor of. But anyway, I'm in favor of expanding the areas where doctors' offices are allowed within the Village of South Orange. I think that to not allow them is a little bit too restrictive, a zoning concept. I think, you know, the doctor's office is a beneficial service for the town. I think there's some synergy with other businesses. I think it's a potentially transit-oriented use in that I could stop, go to the doctor, go to the... and head to the train to work. And I think that what's being debated are slightly more peripheral streets than South Orange Avenue. So, I want to express my support for this. Thank you.
Village President, just really quickly. Our stopwatch has stopped our connection, and so I'll just call out when we come to 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Douglas Newman. I've been a resident for almost 25 years. I served as village president during 2007 to 2011. I also served as a Class 1 member of the Planning Board during the same time period. First, as a matter of process, I would request respectfully that the board table this ordinance with respect to rezoning, the redevelopment district. It was not posted in the news record either this past week or the week before. There was no public notice posted in the local newspaper. And when I tried to look at the ordinance online as recently as this weekend, the referenced addendum, which describes the actual substance of what the board is considering, is not posted for public purview. I'm not quite sure how this came to be, but I just think it's wrong to move forward on an ordinance that a public cannot come to a public hearing without the understanding of what the board is actually considering as a matter of law. If the board decides to go forward, however, I'd like to express my strong opposition and urge the board to consider not proceeding with this. All of the folks who have come forward this evening have talked about the need for medical offices. However, what this ordinance is about, and no one spoke to this point, is about converting retail storefronts into commercial office spaces. My understanding is that this ordinance permits second-floor uses typically used by commercial businesses, not retail businesses, doctors, engineers, architects, consultants, wholesalers, distributors, you name it, to now occupy the retail storefronts on the secondary streets in and around South Orange Avenue. I've not seen the details, but it's my understanding from second-hand information that it covers Vos and Valley and Scotland and all of the secondary streets that are feeder streets to our commercial district. It would be a terrible step backwards in the redevelopment of South Orange Village's central business district to now let those spaces become commercial spaces. I personally think this is a solution in search of a problem by virtue of the number of people who've turned out from Atlantic Healthcare and Overlook Medical Center. This clearly is all about creating a situation that would allow Atlantic Healthcare and Overlook Medical Center to occupy a retail space in the avenue, on Vos Avenue. That is not the way to think about thoughtful planning for our community. You need to take a holistic view with respect to planning, and any community that starts to let its retail storefronts be converted to commercial uses...
30 seconds.
...is taking a major step backwards in terms of redevelopment. So, I urge you, if you do decide to proceed tonight despite the lack of public information, that you not pass this change to the redevelopment plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Leslie Fergani, a lifelong resident and a business owner in town with a business of five generations. I have about 40 years' experience in the business community, more, and a little bit more. And I urge you to reconsider that the whole redevelopment plan somewhat, it can be medical offices. If you look to Milburn and you see they have the PNC Financial Building there, it brings foot traffic. It's a destination. You want... you will go far and wide for whoever your financial planner is or your doctor is. And this is what we need in this town. We need destination businesses. And if that is the business, this is the medical field. It used to be zoned medically. It was changed when the other village president came in, Doug Newman, when Bill Calibris was here. That was zone medical. So, please, I urge you, as a business owner, I'm not even open in the daytime, but I know it can help make this village vibrant. And you could... all you have to do is look to some of your neighboring towns. Look in Milburn, look in Summit. It has an impact. I urge you to pass this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time?
Not sure if we're having a public hearing later or now, but I'll speak now. John Rosellini, Atlantic Health, Summit, New Jersey. I am proud to be with Atlantic Health. I have no problem saying that. But I will tell you, as a former elected official, former Planning Board official, master plans, business development plans, business district plans are living, breathing documents, and times change. And we're here tonight, not just as Atlantic Health, but we're here because we have a successful model that's going on nationwide with Obamacare and healthcare, and that we have downtown locations in other communities. We are a piece of the fabric of the downtown, and it's not just medical, it's professional offices, but we bring foot traffic. Each and every one of you, I know myself included, when it came holiday shopping time this year, how many times did the UPS man show up at your doorstep because you were on Amazon, Best Buy, anywhere.com, and you were shopping online? Those people weren't walking down South Orange Avenue. That's what we'll bring back. We'll bring back steady people all day long for a different type of use. And unlike what I've read online, this is not spot zoning. This is a number of side streets that you're discussing and talking about. So, I think that needs to be cleared up off the bat. This is not just for Atlantic Health. This is for your community. And we, as Atlantic Health, I will tell you, we're proud to say we're a fabric and a part of the community. Medical's moving into your malls. The Mayo Clinic is in the Mall of America. The Short Hills Mall is looking for medical usage and health and wellness, you name it, integrative medicine, people. It's there. It's a part of your daily life, and it's going to bring people to your downtown. It's a piece of your village. It's not just your village. And you take A, B, and C together, and you end up with the full alphabet, okay? And it really works. So, tonight, I'm here on behalf of Atlantic Health for our use, but I have to tell you, we also are a part of your community, and this use is going on elsewhere. You've been invited to Summit to see it going on there, the Overlook Downtown in Summit. It's going on in Morristown. Westfield is knocking on our doorstep. And currently today, most of your medical health care is going out of South Orange. They're going to Milburn, Summit, West Orange, Livingston. And when they go there, guess what food store they're hitting? Guess what pharmacy they're hitting? Guess what bagel shop they're hitting? Guess what diner they're hitting? They're not hitting one on South Orange Avenue in South Orange. So, the fact of the matter is, a couple of things to really be straight on is, it's a great use, it's a new use. The internet, Facebook, wasn't here 10 years ago. Facebook might not be here five years from now going forward. Who knows? Things change. And that's what master plans do. They're living, breathing documents. And I guess in closing, we've hit most everything here. We've operated successfully. We're going to diminish leakage out of your town. We're going to be a part of your town. We're going to be a fabric of your town. And I ask, when you get to the public hearing on the second reading tonight, that you seriously vote in favor of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Is there an opportunity for secondary comment?
Not really. I mean, if we're going to have a public hearing in a moment on this ordinance, and then there'll be a public comment period at the end of the meeting as well. The one thing that I do want to address just before we move on to the minutes and then move on to our ordinance on second reading is the comment that was made about the public notice. I don't know, Mr. Rother Smith, if you'd like to comment on where or where not this was noticed, to make sure that we are in compliance and if we're not...
Yes, I inquired of the clerk, and we have two official newspapers that ordinance is going to be published in. And this was published in one of them, namely, The Ledger.
Okay.
I have a quick... sharing the mic. A point of inquiry, though, and I hadn't noticed this because we discussed it in planning and zoning. The document itself, though, that we're adopting, the resolution says we're going to adopt amendments to the CBD redevelopment plan, but the actual redevelopment amended plan isn't posted to the website anywhere. So, while a public notice might have been in the newspaper that we're considering amendments to our central business district redevelopment plan, the actual changes to the plan aren't on the website or anywhere for the public to find.
Is the ordinance on the website?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And that's sufficient?
Sure.
I mean, did anybody get any comments from people looking for this, that they couldn't find it?
No.
All right, we just got one, but I mean, throughout this time that it's been posted, have we gotten any others?
I did not. I'm not aware of us, and obviously, if we had, it was available, it was available in the clerk's office, and certainly would have been available. And I don't know, we had this discussion a little bit earlier. The... looking at the historic practice of the village has been to only have the actual document and not the backup on the website. I don't know if it was due to size of files or... So, this was not done any differently than all the other ones. Anything that had an attachment, they, for whatever reason, have only posted the actual body of the resolution or the ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that information. We can discuss the rest of it when we get to the ordinance. I'd like to move on to the approval of minutes. So, we have... I don't know if we have... we've got a whole bunch of minutes here, and I don't know if we have different attendants that require different people to abstain. Are people familiar with that? Because I don't have it broken up that way. Because I don't have it broken up that way.
Now, for the October 17th, there is special end conference, and October 28th, the regular meeting minutes. If there's a motion, there was, it wasn't broken up.
So are these broken up into separate resolutions for any particular reason, or just for-
Oh, just by month.
Sorry?
Just by month.
Just by month, okay. Okay, so do we have a motion for the October 17th special meeting, conference meeting, and October 28th regular meeting, moved by trustee Rosner?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Clark. All in favor? Any opposed, abstained? Thank you. The next is the November meetings, which is November 13th special meeting, November 13th conference, and November 25th regular meeting.
I move the minutes.
They're moved by trustee Column.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Hall. All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. The next is December minutes, which is December 9th special meeting, December 9th conference meeting, and December 23rd regular meeting.
I move.
Moved by trustee Column. Seconded by trustee Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move on for ordinance for second reading.
Sure, I will. Ordinance for second reading, ordinance 201320, an ordinance to amend the central business district redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Trustee Rosner or Mr. Lewis, do you want to maybe just give a quick rundown of item by item, the changes for members of the public that might be watching tonight? What I have is the final version. I just don't have the tracking between the two.
I didn't bring my copy with me. Steve, you have it, or? No. Or the basic, what'd you say? The basic changes were there was, there was an overlay district which covered Vos Avenue, Taylor Place, part of Valley Street, and I think one other part, and allowed for offices, including medical offices, is being discussed, and other second-floor offices to be put on the first floor in those, that district. And there were certain parking regulations that go along with that, including, I think it was four spaces per thousand square feet. You, you have it here, Sheena?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay.
Is there some definition of office?
Any definitions along with these offices were included. But the most significant change was allowing offices on the, on the first floor. I should say, point out, this all, this whole conversation started several years ago when, when we looked at other office spaces, including real estate spaces and so forth, what we should allow and not allow, is changing downtowns from, as we've seen in other towns, as mentioned, Summit allows had a medical office, and we see in Milburn, financial offices, and Scotch Plains, we see a San America office, and that's what led to this whole discussion, as the definition of retail and what exactly it is, especially on the, on the secondary streets that are having more trouble attracting retail tenants. I mean, the main streets are having trouble keeping retail tenants, and that's what led to this.
I listened to a lot of comments, and we've had a lot of discussions.
I'm sorry, trustee Davis, but before we get into discussing it, I just want to make sure that we've just given an overview and then opened up-
Okay, I'm telling you, sheena has the rest of it.
And trustee Column may find specifics, but just to, the, actually, the streets are, it's very specific that its property's not fronting on South Orange Avenue, so that also excludes any corner properties if they partially front. So it's on three lots that are south of South Orange Avenue on Church Street, and then it goes down Vos when you get beyond the buildings on the corner, on the two sides, around Taylor, and then around the corner on Scotland until you get to the corner property, which is on the corners excluded. So it's Taylor, Vos, and Church Street. The map doesn't reflect anything on Valley. So those, those would be the three sort of backside streets.
Also, I think the Planning and Zoning Committee, in looking at the definition of office, also considered some exclusions. There are certain businesses that are written that we would not accept in that same categorization. So again, thought was put in for what would be included as well as what would not be allowed.
Right. Okay, are you still looking for something, or no?
Yeah, there, there were added definitions and with respect to lot coverage as well, so it is, it is pretty detailed memo, most of which I found not to be objectionable in the least bit. The planner also updated some of the history of the latest development projects for background information, but there's, there's at least a dozen or so changes to the document or updates to it. But you can move forward with public comment, and if I can pull this up and summarize, I will.
Excuse me, Alex?
Mm-hmm.
She just needs to be closer to the mic.
You're too soft-spoken, Sheena.
That's first. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open this ordinance up for public hearing. And I do have the definition of office. I know that was one of the changes, you know, I'll just read this quickly. So the updated, the revised definition is a room group, a room, group of rooms or building used for conducting the affairs of a business profession, service industry, or government, but where no retail, sales of goods are offered, and where no manufacturing, assembling, or fabricating takes place. And if there's anything else you want to add. But anyway, so I'd like to open it up for public hearing at this point, so if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak about this ordinance in particular, whether you've spoken or not already, please feel free to come forward. And I'm sorry, sir, before you start, I'll also read the definition of professional office, which might help inform anybody who's interested as well, which is a room or suite of rooms where in the business of a physician, dentist, architect, engineer, and other professional person may be carried on.
Again, my name is John McGriff, 394 Irving Avenue, here in South Orange. As a matter of fact, I appreciate the delay in my speaking because you've addressed a couple of, if I had any concerns, you've addressed that because you've already mentioned that you've defined the properties and questions. You've defined the businesses in which are, are allowed and, and not allowed, which, which I'm fine with that. I reflect back, again, having lived here for 22 years, one can imagine the change that has occurred in that period. Positive change, slower than many wanted, and in various campaigns focused on attracting new residents, young, up and mobile persons, persons to move into South Orange. And I think this is right on target to, to hit that mark. Professional. I'm a professional. I want to see professional. I wanted to see professional on the second floor, third floor, fourth floor. I want to see it straight on, sidewalk, professional, because that's what people see when they hop off the train, and that's what people are going to get comfortable with and see that we've tapped the needs of those here historically as those, as well as those that the various organizations, coalitions, et cetera, desire. Okay? So I just wanted to, to say that some of the campaigns that have occurred to elected officials to bring newbies, well, what do newbies want? They want to see professional and professional services, including healthcare, is, as far as I'm concerned, desired. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Dr. Hugh Snyder. I live at 404 Irving Avenue, and I'm the doctor who would like to go into Vos Avenue. Just wanted to clarify a few things about this. First of all, this process has really given me so much respect for how much time all of you trustees put in. Just sitting in in these meetings has been exhausting for me, and I really appreciate how much attention you give to this stuff, whatever the vote ends up being. Thank you for that and for doing this for our town. I moved into town in 2005, and there was an empty supermarket with a coming soon sign and an empty lot that we called the BIFIS Lot. And there was a liquor store on Vos Avenue, and that was 2005, and the redevelopment thing had been designed in 2000, 1996, I think. So it was already eight years old when I moved here. I have a practice in Summit, and I would drive there and see patients who lived in South Orange and Maplewood in Summit. And every time our practice talked about growth, I said, "Let's open an office in South Orange." And we tried very hard in a lot of different locations to find a place. We didn't set out to be in a storefront on Vos. There just weren't a lot of other choices. And I know that it's already legal to do it on the second floor, and the first floor is not ideal for a doctor's office unless you're in a wheelchair, unless you have an arthritic condition. There's a reason why we don't want to be on the second floor. We serve people who need first-floor access, and that's why we're here. I could open an office that my patients who need first-floor access couldn't get to. It would make no sense. And there are people who live in town who are handicapped and need a service on-ground So, you know, I, I want to make sure that this whole first-floor argument sort of is framed in the right way. There's a reason you want to roll in to see the doctor, and there just aren't a lot of buildings with elevators. That's an architectural phenomenon that I found out.
Thirty seconds.
So again, I thank you all for your time that you put in here. I wanted to explain my position. I would love to be a doctor in town with an office in town.
Hi, Michael Feinberg. I'm a resident and property owner in town. I live at 68 Crest Drive. And I'd like to weigh in on some of the problems facing South Orange as a property owner and also as a resident. We see a lot of vacant storefronts on South Orange Avenue. What we're talking about here tonight is the, as I understand it, the arterial roads, you know, Vos, Taylor, areas that are not currently clamoring for retailers. They are not stumbling over themselves to try to rent those spaces. In Atlantic Health and other like-minded businesses, we have entities who want to be in town to service the community, who have proven track records of support of our downtown, of downtowns and similar ones. And I urge you very strongly to vote for this ordinance because ultimately, what we need in this downtown is critical mass. We need boots on the ground. We need people utilizing all of our retail services. And having, having them on what amounts to side streets is in no way, shape, or form going to detract from the retail, from the look and feel of our prime retail corridor on South Orange Avenue. So I, I vote, I request that you vote in favor of the, the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Yes, George Berkeley, I'd like to just add to my previous comments. Dr. Snyder reminded me of the first thing I thought of when I first heard of this program, and when I went to the Planning Commission meeting probably a year ago, and it was turned down. I had the unfortunate experience of spending almost four months in a wheelchair after an accident, another two months on crutches and on a cane until I was able to hobble. During that time, finding a doctor on a first-floor access was virtually impossible in this Essex County area. I got to tell you, you got to consider this. First-floor access is paramount for a doctor's office somewhere in this town. Thank you.
Douglas Newman, South Orange. I just want to address again the fact that the substance of this ordinance was never made available to the public. The referenced amendment, the work that was done was not accessible anywhere. And I just think as a matter of public policy, when considering something as substantial as rezoning the business district, it's not the way to conduct business in an open fashion. To the substance of this ordinance, I think it's a red herring to make this an argument about first-floor access. Most of the medical offices that are in South Orange, on South Orange Avenue to the east of the downtown, on Valley Street, on Vos Avenue, on Prospect Street, on Second Street, are all first-floor medical offices. Icare of New Jersey probably does 1,000 procedures a month with seniors in wheelchairs who need cataract surgery. It's a first-floor office. It's not an impediment to doing business. My kids attended a pediatrician on South Orange Avenue between Grove Park and the business district, first-floor office, thousands of pediatric patients. My wife attended a dental periodontic practice on South Orange Avenue, first-floor practice. So first floor, second floor, third floor, that's really not what's at stake here. What's at stake here is converting retail storefronts into commercial offices. Yes, you've excluded manufacturing, that's good, but you've included virtually every other form of commercial use that can now occupy first-floor storefronts. And when you have businesses in first-floor storefronts, they block the windows, there's no light coming out, there's no reason to walk past them. It's not an appropriate use of a retail space in a business district that's vital or wants to remain vital. The unfortunate part about the avenue, on Vos Avenue, and I had the unique experience of coming before the Board of Trustees 10 years ago as a volunteer with Main Street South Orange's, it was designed with 30-foot-depth retail spaces. The board was urged not to approve that project because retail tenants would be impossible to put into a space with 34, 30-foot-deep retail spaces. There's no space for storage, there's no space for dressing rooms, everything would have to be literally across the street. When a medical practice goes into that space, the windows will have to be covered for privacy. With respect to this being a solution in search of a problem, there are no vacancies on Taylor Street.
Thirty seconds.
The only vacancy on Vos Avenue is the project we're talking about. On Church Street, there's only one commercial property south of South Orange Avenue, and the owner who recently purchased it came before one of the land use boards for approval to build residential. So it's not like there's a real problem to solve here, other than a single landlord and a single tenant that's interested in having the village rezone commercial space at the retail level for non-retail uses. I urge you, I urge you to think long and hard about doing this. These other towns, they have medical arts buildings. That would be a great idea to zone a building for medical arts in this community. Retail space is not the place to put in medical arts, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
In deference to the speaker before me, 357 Springfield Avenue in Summit, New Jersey, Overlook Downtown is a retail space. It's not a medical arts building. What we're looking at in Westfield is retail space, not a medical arts building. And it's not just Atlantic Health Overlook, it's every health system, it's every physical therapy company, it's every company out there in the medical field. So let's not just call it spot zoning, let's not just call it one building, let's call it what the use is and how that use in today's day and age can help enhance your downtown and can bring foot track, traffic to your downtown, which is why other communities in New Jersey and across the country and other shopping malls all throughout this nation are now looking for the medical use as a piece and a component. Medical is not just going to the doctor to have your blood pressure checked anymore. It's a lot more than that, and it goes from acupuncture, massage, to a number of different uses, but it's a full retail setting, and I thank you for considering it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing as there are no more members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close the public hearing and open it up to any questions, concerns, discussion among the board.
I'm going to first, I, I think the point that Mr. Newman brought up is an important one. Not only did he, but a member of our Development Committee didn't have access to this document. Again, that's not to say that, of course, nobody went and asked for it, but it wasn't made available. So what we would be adopting is amendments, but we haven't shown anybody what those amendments are. I think we're close to it because we've been working off this document. It's been in planning and zoning, and we all have it in our packets. But I, I hope that other members of the Board of Trustees may consider what it's like if you're here to speak on this topic and you haven't even seen the document yet. And we've had residents express that interest tonight. So I'm going to move to table this ordinance. So, I'm going to move to table this ordinance.
I would like to continue with...
Do you want to have a little, can we have a little discussion before you formally make your motion?
Sure, sure. This is a discussion that we've been having for a very long time. So, there's a few things I'd like to say. One of the individuals who came to speak said something that I say often in many other situations, that a policy or a document, when it's first created, if it's based on assessments, facts, for you design a policy or procedure, or if you want to implement anything in any organization or community, should be considered organic. Things change. You know, years ago, she and I wouldn't be sitting here because women couldn't vote or run for office. Things change. When, in the last few years, the businesses have changed, as another gentleman stated earlier, a lot of retail is done online. If you go down our South Orange retail corridor, you'll see that we still are challenged to keep those storefronts occupied. I do see a benefit, in my opinion, to change this ordinance, to allow professional organizations and businesses to occupy those spaces as defined as what would be allowed in a professional space, for all the things that were articulated. So, I will not repeat what was stated. But we have to take in consideration, things are changing. And one of the biggest changes that I see that this would support and serve a lot of residents is the Affordable Care Act. That is changing a lot in the sense that there'll be a lot greater demand of people who now can take advantage of the opportunities that will be presented to them. There are wellness organizations popping up, there's doctors who really want and need to get into the communities. And to have a community such as ours that is vibrant, that brings so many things to the tables for services and products and meeting many, many needs of our residents, to leave out the opportunity for professional services to be here just doesn't make sense. I also took the opportunity, so I could be informed, to look at nearby communities and municipalities and see what actually is happening on their side streets. So, I took an opportunity to go through Milburn, I took an opportunity to go through Summit. As a matter of fact, I have an appointment on February the 13th with one of my doctors. Guess where I have to go? I have to go to Summit to see this doctor. We have a lot of construction going on where we will have a density of residents right downtown. Wouldn't it be wonderful that we could offer these additional professional services to this critical mass that will be coming in? We have, you know, a complex going up on South Orange Avenue. In the spring, we're breaking ground for another residential complex on Third and Valley. These properties have been vacant for quite some time. So, I see the business case, the quality-of-life case, to vote for this ordinance. And so, my intention is to vote yes on this ordinance.
I'd like to add, as a member of the Village Center Alliance, the Village Center has been dealing with this issue and has been talking about it for some time. And the members of the Village Center Alliance actually are retailers, they are, the storeowners are, some are in, there are property owners, there are restaurateurs, there's various different businesses. And they are very concerned also with the flavor, the feeling of the downtown. And we do have design standards, and all those need to be looked at and what this kind of a change would have. And overall, the committee voted, the board voted, and they were in favor. And so, I think it's important to know that the folks who are currently there and are responsible for commerce today felt that it was an improvement. Again, it's not going to be on South Orange Avenue itself, but it's the artery roads, arterial roads. And that was felt that to add to the vibrancy, it would be a benefit for the overall community in general, and that they were in favor. So, I just want to pass that information on.
I just want to add, Steve, it's also not on Stone Street, it's not on Village Plaza, so it's not in any of the, you know, the so-called prime retail spaces besides South Orange Avenue. We also discussed this with the Development Committee, as one member pointed out quite a while ago, and they also came out in favor of allowing this change, pointing out many positives, some of which were expressed by Trustee Davis Ford, and some have been discussed in the past about adding foot traffic to a downtown. We also had an article in the League of Municipalities magazines a couple of years ago that pointed to another town that had done something similar and increased the foot traffic. So, you know, you can see a lot of positives. And I understand, in a perfect world, you know, we go back to what it was twenty, thirty years ago of retail on all these streets and stores would be designed better and the building would be designed better for retail, but we see what's going on, and retailers are having a tough time, and spaces are having a tough time renting out. We need everything we can to bring in more people to the downtown, and at the same time, help those retailers that are there get as much foot traffic as possible and customers. And I think that this will, something that will happen, we've seen a success in other towns.
I would just add that I think it's important to remain flexible in this. I mean, the whole idea that this is a document that can be changed is important. Think of Jeff Bezos experimenting with drones delivering, you know, packaging to people's doorsteps and 3D printers. Who knows? Ten years from now, I mean, if retailers are having a difficult time now, it's, I think it's only going to become more difficult. And we have to have this remain flexible, and we have to be able to adjust. And I think so long, in this case, so long as we are not infringing upon residential areas, and so long as we are not excluding the possibility of retail in these places, then I think we're opening up a little more flexibility, and to some degree, we have to adapt to a little bit of organic change that will happen business-wise. But if it can bring more people to our downtown, I think that is a positive thing. Because, as Steve said, I mean, the Village Center Alliance is working very hard to find reasons to get people to come, for any reason, to experience South Orange, and then to hopefully, whatever adjacent businesses that spend money on. But unless we get them there to begin with, that doesn't work. So, I think we need to remain flexible.
And again, getting the additional traffic downtown, foot traffic for the existing retail businesses is also important to retention, but also, it provides a service and a quality of life for the long-term residents who pay the high taxes here. And so, I often struggle, like everyone else, to justify, why am I paying all these high taxes, you know, if I don't get a return on my investment? And I don't want to open up another can of worms because that's another conversation. So, please come to our budget hearings. They're open and transparent, would love to have your input. But what that said is, within reason, without impacting what makes our beloved South Orange the beautiful community that it is, we need to find reasonable and a variety of services to present to the people who live here and pay taxes, as well as encourage foot traffic. It's, to me, is a no-brainer.
Yeah, and I would say, I would, you know, first apologize to the residents that are here that couldn't find the information online, although I would hope for them and for anybody else that might be looking for something on the website and can't find it, to just contact us, and we'll just send the document and post it online so that everybody can see it instead of waiting to the next board meeting. We do try and make that information as available as possible, and I'll certainly, understanding that we've met our legal obligations, defer to what the trustees want to do as far as whether we want to consider passing this tonight or not. But I would add my two cents also as far as this ordinance, that I think this is a really fantastic thing to do. Like has been said, you know, the retail landscape in our downtowns are changing, and, you know, there was a point in time when people who worked at Blockbuster probably didn't think that Blockbuster wouldn't exist at some point, and then it didn't. And there are some people who were able to adapt and be flexible, and they capitalized on that. Those people created iTunes, and they created Netflix and Hulu, and they're making a lot of money, and they have a great business model, providing a service that is something that people want. And I think one of the things that plagues government is an inability to sometimes understand that things are changing, and that just the way that things have always been done is not necessarily always the best reason to justify continuing to do something that way. So, perhaps fifty years ago, you know, the only thing you wanted was retail because there was no way to buy things really anywhere else. And now with, you know, one, two-day deliveries from Amazon, like people have said, you know, that's a serious degradation of the market share that storefront retail has. And the retail that we do have, we're really, really lucky to have. But we have to support them because they're competing against things like Amazon that have much lower overhead and a much larger, you know, more scalable business model. So, to actually support those retail businesses that do exist and that are doing a great job and contributing to our downtown, we have to make sure that they have people actually going to the store. And for us, that's kind of our responsibility, and that's what I see, you know, my responsibility and as a village, our responsibility in doing is finding a way to bring people into the downtown, and whether it's building dense, you know, dense residential housing, so people walk out and they go get something to eat, or instead of getting in a car and going somewhere, it's just as easy to go outside and shop right, you know, on the corner from where you live as it is online. The same thing's for doctors' offices and professional offices. Considering that we're talking about peripheral side streets, for example, a lot of people have talked about the avenue space tonight. If you look at Vos Avenue, the, you know, development potential of that block is very limited. Maybe at some point, the post office will go somewhere else, and there'll be one more similar kind of building in that site, and then it's just all apartments and residential. So, this is not an area of the downtown that people are walking through. This is the end of the downtown. And so, bringing people in to go to those, you know, first-floor professional offices is not going to detract from the walkability of our downtown, it's going to actually add to it, because those people are going to go to the peripheral of the downtown, they're going to go down the secondary streets of South Orange Ave. and visit one restaurant or a cafe or a coffee shop or, you know, another retail store. And I think that's a great thing, and, you know, anything that we can do to bring more foot traffic to support the retailers that are there, you know, something we should consider doing. So, Trustee Cullen, you had a motion...
Can I make a couple of comments first?
Sure.
Wow, that's loud. This microphone doesn't like me. First of all, I wanted to thank Dr. Snyder, who's in the audience tonight. I know this has been a long time, coming before this Board of Trustees and also the representatives from Atlantic Health. I wanted to, first and foremost, state that I think this is going to be a great addition to the town, that particularly a community member, who I think everybody adores, I don't think it's about the individual or the practice, but this is more of an objective view about zoning. So, for me, it's not about the medical office, it is the rezoning and allowing the professional services to come down to the first floor. Most of the comments that I was going to make, and I was making notes, Mr. Newman actually covered them in some of his responses, so I kept crossing them off. So, I'd like to echo a lot of things that he said. And then I heard a lot of residents say, "Well, if you go to Summit, or if you go to Maplewood, if you go here, you see medical on the first floor, professional services." Again, that's a zoning question of what is their downtown core, what is the parameters of their downtown core? What this proposal does is it takes what is a very limited space already in South Orange, where we want the walkability, where we want retail, where we want restaurants, where we've had very limited vacancies over the years. We have many in South Orange, but with respect to our downtown core, it has been very competitive. And if I remember correctly from planning and zoning meetings before I was on the Board of Trustees, I believe there was testimony from Main Street South Orange who said there were retail establishments that were specifically interested in the Vos Avenue property, but for whatever reason, that couldn't work out. So, you have professional uses now able to compete with small retailers that are unfortunately dwindling, they're going away. So, we have to stand firm and support those retailers. To Trustee Schnell's point about the Village Center Alliance and their vote and discussion on this, I think it's important to note that the people on the board at the time who represented the actual retail community were the ones who voted against it. So, this really comes down to the downtown core, what establishments do you want on the first floor? Medical offices are great. As Mr. Newman stated, there's plenty all throughout South Orange where you can get first floor, second floor, third floor. This is the limited space of what in our vision plan we called the core of our community, and what establishments you want on the first floor there. For that reason, I won't be supporting this ordinance. I voted against it on first reading as well, and I think I've pretty much stated several times why. Again, nothing against this particular doctor. I know they will do fantastic in this community, but it's more about a question of zoning. And as it relates to our vision plan, which doesn't go back fifty years, it goes back three years ago, and I thought that was pretty extensive and a good process that we agreed to move forward with. So, I'm going to restate my motion to table as a result of the comments of this not being posted for the public yet, and if there's no second, then we'll move to a vote.
This is a motion by Trustee Cullen. And just to be clear again, Village Council has, that we have met our legal obligations, and what we're talking about is the backup material. So, there's a motion by Trustee Cullen to table. Okay. If there is no second, then the motion fails.
Okay. I'd like to move.
Okay. The ordinance is moved by Trustee Davis Ford on second reading, seconded by Trustee Schnell. Can we have the roll, please?
Roll call. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
No.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson is absent. Trustee Rosner?
I like the way she pulled the mic away from Trustee Cullen. Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes. Your vote doesn't count.
The board has adopted ordinance 2014-20 upon second reading.
Thank you.
Ordinance, excuse me, I said 2014, I meant 2013-20 upon second reading. Ordinance 2013-25, an ordinance approving a draft revised and restated chapter for the township of South Orange Village incorporating some of the revisions recommended by the Charter Review Committee and authorizing the submission of the scene to the New Jersey Legislature for enactment into law.
Thank you. Okay, this is a version of the charter. We've discussed, ad nauseam perhaps is appropriate at this point, and this is basically everything that we had discussed last time, minus changing the titles from village president to mayor and trustee to council, as well as instituting stipends for the next terms or the next positions after these are vacated for the members of the governing body. At this point, I'd like to open this ordinance up for public hearing. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance, please come forward. Okay, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing.
I move the ordinance.
Before you do that, I guess I'd like to say one last time that, you know, I think that this is a fairly short-sighted and disrespectful decision, the direction that this is going for all the members of the governing body up here. It seems pretty obvious that the community has asked us to make these changes, both from the recommendations that came from the Charter Review Committee and the public that overwhelmingly supported these measures on the ballot. So, it seems like people's minds are made up for some reason, but I just want to remind the folks up here that the people that voted us in did ask us to do something different than what we're doing today. You had a motion?
I move.
Okay, the ordinance on second reading has been moved by Trustee Cullen.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner.
Go to public hearing. Public hearing.
We did the public hearing, and nobody spoke.
Trustee Cullen, seconded by Trustee Rosner. Roll call. Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
No.
Trustee Levinson is absent. Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
The board has adopted ordinance 2013-25 upon second reading.
Thank you. And we have a tabled resolution.
Thank you, and we have a table resolution for separate action next.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash two forty-six, a resolution selecting option for new rescue squad facility and authorizing a preparation of plans, specifications consistent with that.
Thank you. So this has been tabled a couple times, all of the material that we have been attempting to put together, which is the analysis and overview of the four different options that have been presented to the trustees, as well as a detailed memo on sheltering have been provided. I think there's one outstanding question that we have about, that will impact some of the costs, but other than that, you know, all the information has gone out, so I don't know if folks are interested. I would like people to make a decision tonight, although it seems like we're going to, you know, kick this can down the road a little bit further. So I don't know if we want to get into the full discussion tonight, or if people just want to table it, it's kind of up to you guys.
If we take it off the, can we discuss it if we take it off, without taking it off the table?
We can discuss it without taking it off the table.
Can you discuss it without taking it off the table?
Yeah.
I suppose you can't.
Yeah. Because I'm, you know, I'm leaning towards, I would lean towards not taking it, not taking it off the table, for some of the, you know, the reasons that you mentioned, that we're waiting for other information. I'm also, you know, we can't disclose everything. I'm not comfortable with any of the options that have been presented to us. I'm not, personally not thrilled with any of them in terms of the, of how we work out, and until we get that other answered, another question answered, I'm not ready to move forward on it at all.
So Arthur, is there anything, just because it sounds like this conversation is very vague for members of the public, is there, and I don't want to attempt to speak on the reason why we aren't talking about the reason why people want to table it, but is there anything that you can say? I feel more comfortable with you attempting to state a reason than myself. Is there anything that you're prepared or comfortable saying about, about this?
You're referring to the...
You're referring to the conversation we had in executive session?
That's correct.
I would prefer until that legal question gets fully resolved, not to discuss that aspect of it.
Okay.
It's hard to discuss any of it about discussing that aspect, which means we shouldn't discuss any of it tonight, in my opinion, but...
Well, there is one piece of it that I want to make sure, I sent, you know, a pretty detailed memo on the pros and cons of the different sheltering stuff, and I know that's been a question that a lot of people have had. I don't think there's a whole big discussion that's necessary there, but I also don't want that to bog this conversation down any further. So if there are any questions that people have about it, maybe we can discuss that tonight, at the very least.
I just, I just, I'm trying to say, that analysis was done by yourself, not by, not by an outside independent or...
We did not pay a consultant to the analysis.
We did not pay a consultant.
And if you're going to discuss that analysis, it should be made public.
Right.
Analysis. Absolutely, yes.
Oh, right, okay.
I think that's the expectation, is that it's going to be public, and then we should discuss it tonight.
Yeah, that's kind of the point I brought up with legal counsel, is that I want it to be officially released or some form of it, so we can at least begin the public policy discussion about the need, or the needs assessment for sheltering in the community, which, at least for me, I would love to be able to discuss in the Public Safety Committee with trustee Clark and trustee Rosner, as well as our professionals and volunteers who work on CERT. So that was my concern, is I know we're doing this in tandem, and a little unfortunate, because what I would prefer we do is first establish the policy of whether we need to be building a shelter as a part of a new development, and then discuss the next step, which is then evaluating the cost. So if it's okay with my colleagues on the board, I would like this, and we're having a meeting tomorrow night, we can move very fast, but for the record, we did get the memo on Friday, so we do need time to be able to vet this amongst ourselves and in a public setting, so that people can follow us as we move through this process.
I would just say one thing, though, remember that tomorrow night, we do have a shortened meeting, and we already have a full agenda, so we may not have the quick turnaround that year.
Yeah, I agree, but we can at least begin it there, I think.
Yeah.
We might be able to bump a few other things that are not as important.
And I think it would be wise to discuss that with our, you know, safety officials.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that I have discussed it with our fire chief, and he is in full support of the plan to build a shelter into the rescue squad facility. We've also got an opinion from Tom Giordano at Seton Hall, who's the emergency management director there. He also agrees that this is a step forward in that, considering that we don't have a shelter space, and maybe for the public knowledge, I don't know how many people are going to want to read through that whole memo, but basically, the problem is that we have two shelter spaces that we right now use as shelters. One is the library, which is sixty-five Scotland Road, and the other is the Baird Center, which is five Mead Street. Those are the only two spaces that we have as primary designations for shelters. So there's another level to this, too. So if there's a major disaster, multi-town, multi-county, something that's categorized as a disaster or catastrophe, where, you know, everybody's daily operations are stopped, then facilities like our schools, the school district, become available, too. And that is basically our ability to go in, and we have an agreement with the school district, to use the gyms, cafeterias, facilities, all those kinds of things. We obviously can't do that if there are kids in the schools, that presents a major safety, security problem. So we have other facilities as well, if there's really, really a big problem, and there's imminent life safety threats. But what we're looking for is something a little bit different, right? So this is for during a snow emergency, during a flood, during a prolonged power outage, those are the main risks that we face as a community here, that we have a space that has a couple different things. One is backup power, which neither of our current shelters do. The other is that they are out of a hazard area, and our primary shelter, which is the Baird Center, is in a flood zone, so we've been unable to use that on a couple different occasions, because when the Rahway River does flood, which has happened a couple times since I've been the village president and OEM coordinator, the building becomes totally unusable. So it needs to be out of a primary or secondary risk area, and which the facility where the rescue squad is would be. And one of the really important things that we don't have right now is one location. We have, there are a lot of residents, and, you know, we gained a lot of feedback, so I'm not sure how much folks expect to gain in the next two weeks, as far as a public policy discussion, but, you know, we conducted a survey after Hurricane Sandy, and one of the things that we found is that a lot of people that live in town didn't even know there was a shelter available. And part of the problem with that is we don't know, until I make the decision to open the shelter, you know, the day of a storm, we don't know which shelter we're going to use. So we don't know if it's going to be the Baird Center or the library, because we don't know if the Baird Center has got power, or if the library has power, or if the Baird Center is flooded, or if it's not flooded. So that's a major impedence to us being able to go to the community and say, hey, this is the address, this is the location, if something goes wrong, your cellphone dies, the radio doesn't work, you can't figure out what's going on, you can come down to this location, and there will be emergency personnel waiting there to direct you to the appropriate place. And that's, you know, a definitive best practice in the industry. And then there are a couple, a ton of other, which I outlined in this document, things that need to be considered. For example, the access to the space, making sure it's ADA accessible, and not only ADA accessible, but easily ADA accessible. One of the things during an emergency that you have to be very careful about is how you use your human capital resources. So the library, for example, which we use if the Baird Center has lost power or is flooded, is not really a great shelter space for a couple reasons. One being that unlike the Baird Center, which has a big, open, multipurpose room where you could set up cots or partitions and divide things up, the library is filled with books, and books are very heavy, and they're on bookcases, and they're organized in a particular way, and so when things are, when you have a storm that's developing or an emergency, and you need to quickly open a space and deploy your human capital resources right away, a library is a terrible place for a shelter, because people have to start moving furniture and books around, and those people are taken from performing other tasks that might be more valuable. And the second problem with it, which we ran into the last time we used the library as a space, is that the library, as a public library, has not only kind of traditional responsibilities, but also statutory responsibilities as a public library, and when you open a shelter, everything has to be very tightly controlled and documented, people are signing in and out, you have to understand exactly how many people are in at any given time, collecting their information, and a public library does not do that. So during these prolonged power outages, which are one of the main risks that we seem to be facing, the library becomes a really poor use for a facility as well. So part of the analysis in the memo is also a look at all of the other municipal buildings that exist, none of which present any feasible or cost-effective sheltering opportunities. So we have a handful of risks, we have two spaces that we use that are completely deficient in being able to provide shelter space, and we have very limited opportunity about where we can actually do this and for how much. If we want to spend two million dollars, we could build a shelter wherever we want, and make it as great as we want to, state-of-the-art equipment and all those sort of things, but we're never going to do that. So the intention with looking at this as part of, and this was the genesis, just for the trustees and for any members of the public, the genesis of discussing this as part of the rescue squad relocation, was that this is the only project in the next decade at least, in the foreseeable future, where any of the members of the administration and public safety and emergency officials could see any feasible, cost-effective way to basically add on something to an existing space. What you don't want to do is build a shelter building that is the South Orange Village Emergency Shelter, and ninety-nine percent of the year, it's open, it's closed, there's nobody in it, and nothing's going on. So the intention is to find a space that has a use on an ongoing basis, but a use that is easily collapsible, Baird Center being a good example, aside from its other problems, and this rescue squad meeting room being a perfect example of that, where you have a room that is used for public meetings, for their meetings, for first aid and CPR trainings, and things like that, but that's big enough that you can basically move that, push the table off to the side, move things out of the way, and now you've got a room that you could fit forty cots in, that has backup power, that is attached to a building that has, that houses emergency personnel on a twenty-four-seven basis during an emergency, and is in close proximity to an area of the downtown that is pretty much always available, it does not flood on Sloane Street with any frequency, and is near the fire department, which is another benefit, and again, is one location that we can always point to. And just quickly, some other secondary benefits to this, just so folks understand the full kind of gravity of it, is that a shelter is not only important for providing emergency sheltering, you know, if people's homes flood, if, you know, the river comes over and everybody on Meadowbrook or somewhere around there, you know, you get ten homes that flood, and people need a place to stay overnight. And it's not only important for during a prolonged power outage, that you have a warm place with backup power, that people can go and either spend the night or charge their electronic devices, which is important for us, because we use those as a tool for emergency communication, but it's also important from a broader emergency preparedness standpoint, which is that we don't have a space that we can use as a great staging area for, in South Orange, if a larger emergency were to happen. So the emergency planner in me that looks at every possible scenario, including things like train derailments and biohazard incidents that can come from Newark or come from other industrial areas around us, that one of the things that you need is a place that you can store medicine, store supplies, and have ambulances and other emergency personnel basically queue up, where you send people down to this one space, and then they're directed off to where they need to be. Unfortunately, like I said, there aren't other municipal spaces that really fit the bill, and we can go over any of the ones people might have questions about. Taking advantage of private facilities like Houses of Worship, Seton Hall, and places like that, that have some level of facilities that we might have access to, are helpful as a secondary space, but because we don't control them, we don't control the access, we don't control the code, the building specs, all those other things, I would never be comfortable, as an OEM coordinator, as a village president, to say, let's rely on this third party to operate this emergency space for us. And then the last piece is what the county provides, which is extremely limited. The county does not provide emergency sheltering for South Orange. The county provides emergency sheltering for the county. So when there is a large countywide incident that involves multiple towns, they'll activate their emergency operations center and activate the shelter, which during the last couple storms actually didn't have power anyway, and was a major problem, I would not have sent any residents there to begin with. And so that's not really a primary resource either, with the, excuse me, additional circumstance that when the river does flood, which is one of our hazards, is it bifurcates the town right down the middle. So the residents on the west side of town might have access to a county facility in West Orange, but residents on the east side of town would have no way of getting to the west side of town, and wouldn't have access to those resources no matter what happens, and no matter how good they may or may not be at that particular moment. So that's kind of just a brief overview of some of the information that's contained in there, and I would definitely love to answer any questions, and make sure that any concerns that people have, or any outstanding items, we can get through tonight, so the next time we convene, we can actually make a decision.
So I guess we're talking about this. All right, yeah, I do have questions and concerns as well. Number one, thank you for the memo, I think that was an excellent analysis, and kind of laying it all out there for us to think about. And I have to admit, I actually had to go and make my own spreadsheet grid of all the options, and look at them, and think about it in that way, because otherwise, it is a big fuzzy mess in my head. But in trying to think about that, I, what I came around to is that felt like two questions that we aren't necessarily asking, which should be asked initially, are, one, what realistic quantity of individuals would we need to shelter, given various scenarios? And that's the problem, you're forecasting all sorts of doomsday scenarios, and some substantially less doomsday. And so that's, that's one pretty important question is, the quantity, because we know experience with recent storms, that we end up needing to shelter small amounts of people, not, you know, less than twenty. My experience with the CERT team was that the library was not actually a very great location for that, because of the fact that it was still functioning as a library, and you had people milling in and going out, as they should be. And in a shelter scenario, that's problematic, when you've got people who are under stress or duress for other reasons, to have them engaging with the general public, it could be a problem. So basically, when I made my grid, I kind of came to the same conclusion you had, which is that we have no ideal, we have no ideal space, given a lot of different concerns. The other thing I came to is, though, I'm not convinced that even if we had the space that you want on Sloane Street, that we still have everything covered. One Achilles heel I felt like we had is that you pointed out in a flood event, that the town is bifurcated into east and west, using the Cody Arena on the west side is a problem for anybody who's on the west side, because they can't get there either, because there's the other branch of the Rahway River on the opposite side of the hill, which presumably, in a flooding event, if the east branch of the roadway Rahway River overflows, then the west branch would as well, and that would make anybody on the west side of our town, it would be very difficult for them to get to the Essex County Shelter. So that's, that's a concern there in that scenario. To date, the only sort of west-side shelter option that I know we, we have really, is potentially the middle school, but that's only in the case where you would have a really widespread scenario, where we have a lot of people displaced, and that's, at that point, we're talking, you know, you know, Alex has to declare, you know, a state of emergency, and all bets are off, as far as the school being used anyway. So I feel like that is one Achilles heel, which isn't really addressed, is that the west side of town is, in some scenarios, potentially still without a shelter option. So that's a concern.
Do you want me to, or do you want to go through all yours, or do you want me to address that?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a great, there are a couple of great points that you brought up. One is, I'm not familiar with the west branch flooding to the degree that ours does. I mean, all of them have been engineered over the past couple decades, and they flood a lot less than they used to.
Talk to someone from Melbourne.
What's that?
Talk to someone from Melbourne.
Well, right, right, but that's not, but that, but getting from here up to Northfield, going to Cody Arena does not necessarily, you know, you don't have to go through there.
It's where they're not, South Orange Ave.
Right, and South Orange Ave, you know, you can assume that during a storm, South Orange Ave is going to be closed, and we direct people down and up to Northfield, which will still get them to the Cody Arena. So the odds that they're going to get cut off from that are pretty low, lower than the odds that our town is going to get bifurcated. But I think the overall point that you make, which is, which is correct, which is, this does not complete our responsibility, and I concluded that at the end of the memo, that this, you know, I would not say, okay, well, this is done, you know, we're all good, we don't have to plan anymore about any of this. This is a major step in the right direction to rectify some of the major deficiencies that we have right now, that not only do we have, but that we have been, that as a professional, myself and others have noted, residents have noted in our discussions, surveys, meetings after Hurricane Sandy, and so I think at this point, having the information and not doing something where the cost is actually extremely reasonable, considering the kind of, the kind of value that we're going to get for it, you know, we're talking about somewhere around ten percent of the overall cost of the project to add on this kind of a space, which is pretty small, right? You can't build a building for anywhere near that much, it's going to cost ten times that much to build a building of any kind of similar size. And so, so that, I agree with that, you know, this does not discharge the full responsibility. But right now, we have nothing. We have no spaces with backup power, we don't... We have no spaces with backup power, we don't have any spaces that we can guarantee reliably that we can use during a storm, and with, by doing this, we would have one. And we would have one single point that we could send people to, we would have one space with backup power, and again, we have zero right now. So going from zero to one, in my opinion, is a really big jump, and there is a lot more that needs to be done, and I think there's a lot more that the county and the state need to do to allow us to have access to better resources, because it should not be on every single town in New Jersey to provide a shelter for, let's say, ten percent of your population. You know, that would be far too expensive to do it that way. But to have one very basic facility that comes at a very, very, very small cost in the overall grand scheme of any of this, to me, would be kind of the selling point, was that we're getting a big value for it, going from none to something, and the cost is pretty small compared to, you know, how much it would cost to do anything similar to this if it's not done on this one project. For example, looking ten years in the future, I don't believe there is any other opportunity that this town will have to create this function within the village at anywhere near this low of a cost.
Okay. My, I guess my other main concern is, as far as the buildings that do have backup generators right now that play some fire, and I absolutely correct that backup power is critical to a shelter, as we saw again when we all lost power last big storm. However, there's also the best practice of not co-locating a shelter space in the emergency services space, which is why we wouldn't put one in the fire, fire department, or we wouldn't put one in the police department. So I'm not really sure how doing that in the rescue squad isn't basically violating that best, best practice.
Sure, and I can clarify the best practice. The best practice is not to not co-locate a space, the best practice is that you can't have the operations of either of the spaces mix. So you can have them next to each other, that's absolutely acceptable and actually preferred, because one of the things that's in our emergency operations plan is that two EMTs, one crew from the rescue squad, has to staff a shelter anytime it's open. So actually co-locating that, you know, right adjacent, as close as you can get to the rescue squad is great, because now you actually don't have to take a resource away from their headquarters, you can keep them right in their building, and they're right next to the space where they need to be. But the best practice, there is absolutely a best practice, which is, you're correct, why we can't use the police department or fire department, and even why we would run into issues at the library, for example, is you can't have the functions mix. So part of the problem is that even when looking at something like Village Hall, which is the only other possible, like distant option, which is not an option, I should say, but is the closest thing to an option, but the amount of money that you would have to spend to create separate entrances, where when we're building a building for the first time, it's very easy to do that, you just move on the design, one entrance from one place. So the idea is that this building is being designed with total access control between the two spaces. So there's a separate entrance for the area of the rescue squad that would be used by the rescue squad, so that's both the ambulance bays and the crews quarters, so it's like the bedroom and bathroom for the members that are there and a small living space. And then there's basically a wall with access control between it, so that door can be opened if they're having public meetings, or it can be closed and someone can't get in to the, you know, secure areas where there's medical supplies and medical records and the actual crews. So there would actually be no, like cross-contamination of operations, because the people, the shelteries would be using one entrance that is not necessarily connected to the other areas of the rescue squad, and the rescue squad members would be using another entrance. So they'd be coming in separate doors, and they'd be right next to them, so if someone is sick and, you know, they knock on the door, they'll come over and take care of them, but other than that, there isn't a mix of the functions.
Okay. Last concern slash consideration would be basically the fact that at this point, while we don't have an ideal, single, single location to call our shelter, what we have done is, as you point out, you make a judgment call based upon the, wherever the event is that we have to react to, and use either the Baird Center or the library. So given the relatively limited number of people that we typically have to shelter in those kinds of scenarios as opposed to a mass scenario, can we basically beef up the Baird Center, with the exception, obviously, it's in a flood zone? But could we beef up the Baird Center with backup power and have as a rollover the middle school, where you could also be able to, to some degree, close down the active space? And I think in frankly, a lot of scenarios where if we have a prolonged power outage, we're not going to be having school. If we have a significant enough flooding, I can't see the, you know, Brian Osborne being willing to put kids on buses and send them around the town. So I think in the one scenario, be it not flooding, that the Baird Center would suffice, and in another scenario, if we have flooding, then the middle school should suffice, given we have a backup power generation system. And I don't know if we've put any thought into the finances behind what it takes to give those buildings backup power.
Yeah, so, and I apologize, those are definitely concerns that are on my mind, and I apologize if I wasn't clear in the memo about addressing those a little bit. As far as the prolonged power outages, school usually is open. Just, just on that note, when, after Sandy happened and we had the outages, the schools were back, you know, within a couple days. And even some of the schools that didn't have power, the school district was still open. So kids were in a lot of the schools. And another point to that is also that just not a lot of the schools don't, none of the schools have backup power either. So there wouldn't be great, even if we really could use them as a, I think the only school that has it is parts of Columbia High School in the administration building, although I could be wrong, but I know that not all of them have it.
Well, my point is if they don't have backup power, then they would not have class.
But that's what I'm saying, is they did, right, is they just sent the kids to the other schools. The schools were open in some of the, anyway, within a couple days after Sandy, the school district was back open, even though, you know, we had residents without power for up to two weeks. So we were still, you know, people were coming down to SOPAC and charging things, and people were going down to businesses and stuff, you know, for two weeks, you know, seven or eight days while school was open. So we wouldn't really be able to use those necessarily. As far as the cost of, like, basically retrofitting another building, there's two, there's a couple of issues. One is that it would probably be a really bad use of money to do that at the Baird Center for two reasons. One is we don't know what the future of the Baird Center is, and two is that putting a backup generator on a building in a flood zone is just not a good idea, right? You're going to get a very, very low yield from that investment, because half the time that you would have used it, you can't use it because it's flooded. So the only, you know, logical thing, if you were to take that approach to it, would be to then look at the library, which presents a whole other set of problems, which is that it's not an ideal shelter space. And the cost of actually taking a generator to a building that size that is not already hooked up for a generator, which requires like pretty significant reengineering of the electrical system, and you can't just like, you can design an electrical system, which is one of the considerations for Village Hall and any, basically any building, new building that we do, is that you can make a couple, you know, one floor of it or one area of it, where you can basically pull up a generator and plug it in, but Baird Center and Library, you can't do that with. So the cost of actually installing a generator system in those buildings is pretty much approximately equal to the cost, the marginal cost of building a shelter space onto the rescue squad facility. So commercial generators can run, you know, easily between a hundred and a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand dollars, depending on how big the building is, how old the electrical system is, how, you know, archaically it was designed when it was built, which in our case is probably very. And so the costs are somewhat relatively equal, but by retrofitting that building, you still have all of the other problems that go along with it, that this particular facility that we're looking at doesn't have. So if you look at the value of the amount of money that you're investing, you know, on one, you're getting a very limited value. Either, you know, putting that generator on one of those two buildings, we're getting only a very mediocre, at best, shelter space that still has a bunch of other problems, regardless of which building it is. And the other is you have, you know, relatively similar, similar amount of money with almost none of those problems that those other two spaces would have. So, you know, I mean, that's, you know, for anyone to make their own analysis of, but the costs are fairly approximate between putting a generator on a building the size of the library or the Baird Center, and building the more expensive option of the two different options that we have for the shelter space.
One of the things I would disagree with, and we can certainly go back to it, is earlier on, you said that after Hurricane Sandy, we did the survey and the neighborhood meetings, and I actually participated and helped you with that one. If my memory is correct, I believe the results of both the survey and the neighborhood meetings were that people were very aware that we were operating shelters, because they had received your notices, the phone calls, the emails, but then opted not to use them for their own reasons. They had, you know, the demographics of the community are unique, I think a lot of these people are, are folks of means, can, can find friends, family, transportation. I think that coming to a government-operated shelter might be perhaps one of the last options. And by last option, I mean in a true state of emergency where there's chaos and we need to be shutting down public buildings, et cetera, I think that's when the majority of the folks in the community would go. So then it goes back to, to my original thought about the needs of it. Having been at the shelter, you know, letting everybody know, whether it be community message boards or via email, like, "We're here, does anybody need us?", it ended up being like more CERT people than actual shelter clients. But what we found from the survey in the neighborhood meetings was the desire of the community to seek areas where there was power and warmth. So it wasn't a high priority need of, I quote unquote, "sheltering", it was more Maplewood had power charging stations, and then finally SOPAC opened up and people were running in there. And then the central business district, fortunate for us, didn't lose power, so everybody wanted to go and grab a coffee, and then they were putting their cellphones in to make sure that they stayed in touch with everyone. So I felt like maybe we just go back and double-check what the community actually told us, but I believe that was the case, is that they knew about the shelters that the, that the village had opened, and that they chose not to use them for various reasons, whatever they may be. To Walter's point, where I really think he hit it, is that creating a forty-bed, did you say it's forty-bed, it could be forty to sixty?
Approximately, and it depends on which of the designs that we're talking about.
Okay. So roughly forty to sixty, if you look at our overall population, I mean, we're looking at less than one percent of the population that that could service at a time. And as discussed, if, if the library's in use, and the schools are operational, and all these municipal functions and school functions are going on, then what is the real true state of the emergency that we're in, and why are people using that space there? Is it power charging, or is it because they needed to be co-located next to an emergency responder? And then, again, the next level is, if it wasn't flooding, we could use the Baird. So you're creating almost like a, I love my Venn diagrams, or maybe my tree diagram, of all the various scenarios of how we end up in this new additional space, whether it's, you know, five hundred square feet or fifteen hundred, of when you'll actually use that space, which is where I don't, I'm not firm in my views of where we end up there. I, again, appreciate the memo, I learned a few things from it, but it was the actual data that I thought was missing from it. The other thing that I'd love to see is kind of a GIS map of where all of the available shelters are right now, so we understand our approximate location to definitive shelters that open, like, we know they're going to be there, and other possibilities.
I'm sorry, you mean county shelters?
Yes, county, or ones that are functioning. Alex addressed this in his memo, the nonprofits or non-government organizations that frequently open up, they're not run by municipalities, but they're still an additional, an additional resource for people. So where I come down right now, and I'm, I'm flexible, I'm always flexible, but it seems like there are various opportunities for us to address the needs that we need to, and I believe that sheltering is a very important, critical need, but that need has to be based on the demands and then the overall cost of what we're investing in. Like any public policy decision, I mean, I believe everybody on this Board of Trustees wants to make capital expenditures, and so we have to prioritize them with very limited resources. So for the time being, those are some of the things that I really want to look at, is the number of state of emergencies that we've had, or times that we've opened up a shelter in the past ten years, any data that may be available of who took advantage of them. I mean, I know Sandy, but prior to Sandy, I had no direct involvement, going back to the survey, which was the purpose of it, to really identify what, what people thought were good or needed improvement. And then also looking at the series of alternatives with any cost expenditure, whether this be a hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, if you could invest that in other levels of emergency management or public safety in the community, is that a better expense for us as a Board of Trustees, rather than the investment in, in shelter space? Things like the reverse nine-one-one notifications to people. We heard a lot of different things from, from the way that the community interpreted Hurricane Sandy and the feedback that they gave us. And that's kind of where I am right now, and I, I definitely want, I know you want to move quickly, I want to move quickly, and I know Village Council and the administrator need to move quickly on some of the other things that we're discussing on the legal side. So, you know, we could belabor the point all night or debate this, which I'd love to, or we could definitely go to public safety also and just have it at a committee level, which, you know, you agreed to sit in on. I know originally you wanted to go through that channel, and at least then we can kind of have a more informal conversation with you, our chiefs, you know, talk to Seton Hall, and kind of cover all the questions board members have. And if there's anything additional, you could send to Alex, and then let's go through all of them, scrub them, and at the next meeting, make a policy decision of whether or not, you know, this is the type of capital expense we want to pursue.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I'll just say, I can't make the public safety meeting tomorrow, so I definitely want to have an opportunity to make sure to address people's concerns tonight as well. And as far as a couple of those things go, I would half agree with you, with the way that you remembered things after Hurricane Sandy. People's preference was definitely not to stay in the shelter, right? We listed out what people's preferences were, and the preference was by far to stay with family and friends. Not everybody has that option. And, and so I think, so my half agreement is that, yes, the preference is definitely not, that's pretty low on people's list, partially because when you think of like government-operated shelter, you're like, "I don't know what that's, I don't want to go there." And there's a perception around it that's probably not particularly positive, but I also did hear from a lot of people that they didn't know that there was a shelter. And I definitely got that complaint and feedback back from people. And part of that is on us, you know, putting a little bit more information out there, but I think part of it is also that, you know, people in Maplewood knew where to go because that's where people go. We don't have a place, we don't have that one spot that people know. So the culture in our community is basically, I mean, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg, people don't use a shelter because there isn't a shelter. We don't have one. I wouldn't go to a, you know, if I needed to stay somewhere overnight, I wouldn't want to come to one of our shelters. There's no backup power, they're in buildings that flood and are old and like are drafty, I mean, it's not, it's not an ideal situation, they're really, really bad shelter spaces. And that's why I'm not comfortable doing anything other than recommending that we have to do something different. Even if it's only for ten or fifteen people, that doesn't matter to me, because what we have is a situation that's incredibly deficient and does not provide, when you say we have a shelter, that should mean we have backup power, we have a whole slew of other functions available with that space that we don't currently have. And so perhaps that's part of people's reservation of using our facilities, is that someone maybe stayed there once eight years ago and then said, "I'm not going back there, that was terrible." And if we do a better job of, you know, picking something and having a unified message about what it is, and what you have access to, and advertising that, you know, year-round and before storms and during them, you know, we'll probably see an increase in the people that use them. There's no way to predict how many people will use a shelter or not. It is like totally impossible to do that, right? But, again, what I would come back to at the end of the day, is that for the amount of money that we're talking about, you could maybe put a generator on another building. And we don't really even have another building that's suitable, even if it did, if it did have a generator. So the question is actually, before you all, is not a question about any of the particulars here, it's a really, really, really simple question. And the question is, do we need to provide better sheltering space in South Orange? That's the only question that needs to be answered, because if the answer is no, then the answer is no. And that would be something, hold on, that would be something I would disagree with, and I would think would be a horrible disresponsibility to the residents, but it would be a decision that you guys would make. If the answer is yes, then this is going to be the only option that we will have in the next decade. So we need to do it, unless someone hasn't, wants to present another option. We've gone through all the different ones, we've looked at the estimated costs of what we can do in different buildings, but it's actually a really, really, really simple question, right? And that is just, do we need to do better than what we're doing right now? And if so, we have an option in front of us that's extremely cost-effective, and that we're, you know, ready to do. And again, if not, then that's it, and that's the decision, is this board is comfortable with the level of facilities that we're providing.
To me, to me, it's not quite that simple, Alex. I think there's, there's other issues involved, and for the amount of money, and something I had raised before, is that we could possibly buy portable generators to provide at certain buildings, depending on what the level of the emergency is, and have those generators ready to go. For instance, if there's not a flood, if there's something like a Sandy and we need to do power at the Baird Center, we could have a portable generator power up one part of the building.
You can't do that.
Actually, we can do it, and we discussed it. And it's been discussed, and we spoke to the engineer about it, it can be done. We also talked about the flexibility of having space, and this building, which is now our building, we could also use the loft space if we had to, which could probably hold seventy-five or eighty beds, and just take it over, because the loft often sits empty. And if there's a real true emergency, whatever event was up there, would probably be canceled. And somehow, I think, there's plenty of room on the roof of this building to put an emergency generator, and it probably wouldn't cost any different than generator, and it probably wouldn't cost any different than the addition to that building and be a lot more effective in terms of the amount of space, and at the very least, they can get popcorn, too. So there's a lot of other options that we have that we can discuss. And, you know, you're throwing one option out here and telling us, "Make a decision," and we're not getting an overall view, we're not having an overall discussion about all the different options. We didn't have an outside expert come in to tell us what these options are. We have one point of view about adding to the rescue squad, or not adding to the rescue squad, which may or may not happen because of cost issues. So I think there are other options we do have to discuss, including the portable generators. And also, we're spending anywhere between $5 and $7 million net to pay, to renovate Village Hall. In that renovation, we could say, "You know what? We want to make sure that we can have separate access to the big room and have it be able to lock off, because that building's going to have a generator, and we can use that room without disturbing village operations, which would be disturbed anyway if there's a real true emergency, as we saw last time when, during Sandy. It was not operating anything like Village Hall the first couple of days." So there are other options, and we should discuss all those other options. I'm not sure this was the place. We've already been here almost an hour now just on this one topic, and not everyone has even spoken. So I think that if you're asking me to make a decision tonight based on the information I have, eh, no, I'm not ready for it. I would say no, and it's not that I don't want a shelter, I think we have better options or there might be better options. And I also think that we can take advantage of the temples, the churches, and the schools, including Seton Hall, and if there's a real big emergency, then we'd have to use those options. And the last time, you know, during Sandy, we were somewhat lucky, I hate to use that term "lucky," in that the downtown did not lose power, we did not lose our supermarkets. And I think that a much bigger concern to me, besides people having to be cold tonight, is that we have to make sure that there's a way to get food and water supply to the people. And we almost lost our water supply last time due to issues with East Orange Water, a big surprise. And that we really need to make sure that we have all those things possible and ways that a supermarket's going to stay functioning and the restaurants can stay open, so people have options to eat, and that East Orange Water, or wherever we get our water from in the future when the contract runs out, has backup plans. And those are all part of a whole big emergency plan. For me, just looking at the picture of having 20 or 30 beds, which was available last time, would, you know, we managed to make do very well at the Baird Center, and it worked out just fine. And, you know, we organized on the fly, which may not be the best way to do it, but by the same token, we don't know how accessible the rescue squad is going to be if the river overflows, which I don't think it's ever really overflowed to the point where you couldn't get across South Orange Avenue. But if it ever got to that point-
It has.
-then we'd have that same problem with people getting there from the west side of town. So I think we need to look at every option. I think we really need to have a much more, bigger holistic view of the whole thing than just telling me, "I have to make a decision tonight or in the next two weeks," based on a very limited information that's been given to us.
Well, I'll just respond to that in a couple ways. You're throwing some options out there that are not correct, right? You've got some information, I don't know where you got it, but it's not right. And so if you're using that to base your opinions on these things, that's a fallacy. And I'm not coming in here saying, "This is the only option, we haven't explored everything else." I actually listed, bullet pointed out in the memo, which hopefully you read-
I read it.
... all the different options. And we've discussed all the different options. For example, what we could do in Village Hall, and it would cost two or three times at least more than this, when we got very preliminary cost estimates about what it would take to put generators in the building, which by the way, there aren't plans to put generators in the whole building. So your, you know, idea that you can just plug generators into any building you want is incorrect. The idea that Village Hall is going to have a generator for the whole building, incorrect. And even to do a very preliminary electrical reworking without even talking about having to redesign the entrances and exits to different spaces to provide better access control, it's already two or three times more expensive than the option that's in front of us. So I'm not pushing one option, I provided all the different options that we've thought about, and we've discussed a lot of them and got cost estimates on many of them. What I'm simply doing is giving you my professional and expert opinion on this, which I am a professional and expert, that this seems to be our best option, especially for the cost. If you want to spend six months, you know, discussing this and never, you know, end up doing anything, you know, that's your prerogative to do, that's the Board's prerogative to do. I think that we have a very cost-effective, pretty simple decision in front of us, which is, do we want to make something better or not? And here's an option to make it better, and it's at a very low cost, and we can do it and we can provide a service to residents that we currently do not provide, and that in all the conversations that we've had over the past year, two years, about sheltering space, that there have not been any other options that have come up that would be anywhere near as cost-effective to provide this kind of value. And I went through most of them, most everything in that memo. My conclusion was that this is the best one. And if people agree with that, then they can vote for it, and if not, they don't have to. But to say that this is just, the whole conversation about one option is also false. And so, you know, happy to discuss any of the options, but I also think that we have the opportunity in front of us. If people don't want to make a decision tonight, that's fine because we still need a little bit of information about how that's going to impact the costs, which could impact whether people want to do this or not. But the idea of like having a broader discussion, like, you know, the same one that we revisit our entire form of government, like, it's not going to happen in a couple of weeks. It's going to take six months, it's going to be a year, there's going to be another storm. And as the village president and as the OEM coordinator, I'm the one responsible for having to tell people that they have to stay in a shelter where there's no backup power and it's cold. And if you want to go down there and do that and have that conversation with the residents and tell them, "Well, we're actually studying the issue still, even though it's been two years, and we've gotten professionals from all different fields to weigh in on this, and we've had community feedback and we've gone through this whole process, but we still haven't made a decision yet," you know, I'll be happy to give out your cellphone number to those people. But otherwise, I think this is just one more area where, you know, let's not kick the can down the road. We've got a decision, an opportunity in front of us, it's pretty cost-effective, brings a lot of value that we don't have, why not?
I have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
I just, I want to get us to the point where we're actually going to make a decision. And you said it, and actually, I think the reason that we're not ready to vote today, I hate to say, first of all, I think you made some very compelling arguments, I think your document is well-written, it does explain the points, so I appreciate that, and I also learned a lot from that. But one thing that you did emphasize and have been emphasizing in terms of your decisioning is around cost-effectiveness. And I agree with that, and I think that's why we can't vote, because there is one item left. I think you've gotten us really far, but I think there's a very key element which is still, has to be resolved. And then, because cost-effectiveness is so important, if we had infinite resources, there's no question, but we all know that's not the case. So we have to be prudent in how we look at it. I agree with you that cost-effectiveness is an important element. Public safety is the goal, but again, we, there's a large spectrum of what we can afford to do and what's right to do when you look at, you know, even almost actuarially, you know, risk and all that. So I just, I want to cut to the chase and I say, I think we need to see the answer to that before we can vote.
Well, and I just, and I appreciate that, and I agree. You know, I think that moving this, you know, waiting for that is fine, I just want to make sure that if people do have questions, if there were things that weren't included, I tried to be as thorough as possible without being too boring, but if there are questions that I either can answer tonight or do more research on for next time, you know, I'm certainly open to those and apologize if there are things that are outstanding in there that I didn't address because I did try to make sure that-
I want to piggyback on what just Trustee Schnall just said. The document was really informative, and I want to say kudos to you for doing a great job of putting it together, and it was an easier read because of the way you prepared the document. However, I think that since the Public Safety Committee meeting is tomorrow, so we're not talking about a big time lag, it gives an opportunity in that committee, which its purpose is public safety, to do additional vetting and to raise any other questions that can be brought back to the Board, so we can move forward and make a decision because we do have a timeline in regards to that we need to make a decision, and to drag this out creates potential liabilities for us in regards to moving forward on this project or moving, or not moving forward on the rescue squad. So with that said, I think we've all said everything that we could say tonight, and I would just say that-
I can reschedule if you and Mark can attend tomorrow night, I can reschedule tomorrow night's meeting on a night you're available.
Right.
I'm sorry. What I was saying was, if the village president and trustee Rosner can't be available tomorrow night, I can reschedule the public safety meeting for a time that both of you are available. And then it's myself and trustee Clark, and we have other professionals there, and I think we could go through all those questions a little bit more.
That would be, that would be great.
Does that work?
Yeah, so while we talk afterwards and try and-
I think that would be helpful to the members of the Public Safety Committee as well, to get a little heads up on what we're going to be talking about.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so, yeah, let's talk.
All right. That sounds like a plan.
Okay. So we never took it off the table, so remaining on the table until the next meeting. And are we pretty confident we're going to get that, we're going to be able to have that number that is impacting so significantly the cost of this by the next meeting?
We're going to work, we're going to work together. There's some issues that we've been discussing on that, and in the course of the next couple of days-
In the course of the next couple of days, we'll refine that and get an opinion to you.
Thank you. All right, next, moving on to our consent agenda.
Resolution 2014-21, a resolution granting raffle license 1243, National Council of Jewish Women, Essex County, section for an off-premise merchandise raffle. Resolution 2014-22, resolution appointing business owner Laura Nichols as an at-large member to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Resolution 2014-23, resolution appointing business owner Clark McCarthy as a member to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Resolution 2014-24, resolution to cancel tax overpayments and small balances from calendar year 2012. Resolution 2014-25, resolution hiring a part-time clerk typist in the South Orange Building Department. Resolution 2014-26, resolution calling on the legislator to make permanent the 2% cap on interest arbitration awards. Resolution 2014-27, a resolution appointing representatives to the Community Development Block, Community Development Block Grant Program for 2014. Resolution 2014-28, a resolution authorizing the village president to submit applications for Essex County Community Development Block Grant funding for program year 2014. Resolution 2014-29, resolution awarding a contract to winner Ford for the purchase of three 2014 Ford Focus S vehicles, and the amount not to exceed $45,735. Resolution 2014-30, resolution designating Continental Resources, CONRES, as vendor and installer for all networking and server-related Cisco products under the state contract M-7000, vendor number 73979, Cisco Systems, Inc., from January 1st through to May 31st, 2014. Resolution 2014-31, a resolution awarding a contract to Bear CDJR for the purchase of two 2014 Jeep Patriots, and the amount not to exceed $38,500. Resolution 2014-32, resolution awarding a contract to She International, Inc., for the purchase of an Enforces CAD RMS system, and the amount not to exceed $1021,043 pursuant to New Jersey State Contract M-000003.
Thank you. Is there any questions on any of the consent agenda items?
Yeah, I have a question, I guess it's probably for Barry. On 2014-029, the resolution awarding the contract for winner Ford, I just want to double-check. Are these, these the vehicles where you did the calculation, figured out that hybrid vehicle would not-
The payback would be in excess of 20 years.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to double-check.
20 years?
If you went the hybrid versus the Ford Focus-
How much more are the hybrids?
The hybrids are, yeah, it's unfortunate how much more expensive they are.
It's going to be environmentally friendly.
Yeah, yeah. And it's actually one of those models where there is a direct, there is a direct comparison, and it's, what, it's like almost 10 grand more?
Yeah. About 10,000 more. And the, and the other thing is, these, the Focuses are very fuel-efficient, even their city mileage is almost 30 miles to the gallon. So then, the savings with the hybrid.
And I guess my next one was just the 2014-031 with the Jeeps. What department are those Jeeps for?
That's engineering and code inspection, and it's, the basis for that is to get four-wheel, all-wheel drive for, at certain times of the year, code enforcement needs to be out during snow and ice conditions, as does engineering and construction. It's, I mean, they'll be somewhat shared between code enforcement, construction, engineering. But these are all-wheel drive, they're the smallest, most fuel-efficient all-wheel drives that are available, so that, you know, that's obviously is the price for two, so.
Okay, yeah, I did check into those. You did obviously look into the fuel efficiency of them, I was just wondering if the all-wheel drive was actually necessary for the department.
I think they are, you know, given, you know, the winter conditions. We believe it's warranted, they, it's replacing, in the engineering department, it's replacing an all-wheel drive vehicle.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion for the consent agenda.
I approve.
Removed by trustee Cullen, seconded by trustee Schnall. Can we have the roll, please?
Roll call. Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson is absent. The Board approves the consent agenda.
Next is the approval of bills. Who's going to be trustee Levinson tonight?
I guess I'll do it, but trustee, trustee, you know, we got these listed bills, I think we got it today, and I don't think we reviewed it, but, so, Barry? So I would, I would like to say that we go ahead and pay all the payroll bills and pass things, but anything that's in, other bills that are on there that we hold off for next time, and as for something urgent, every one of us has a chance to review them.
Well, and I think, yeah, unfortunately, trustee Levinson cannot be here.
And I do want to pull C3.
Pardon me?
I want to pull C3 also.
He wants to pull C3.
Okay, we could certainly hold C3. Might I suggest, if you would entertain approving the bills list subject to trustee Levinson's review, we don't obviously send the checks out for a couple days anyway.
Okay, I'll be okay with that, okay. So I move the bills list subject to trustee Levinson's review and withholding C3.
I second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Rosner, and a second by trustee Davis Ford.
Point of inquiry, what do you mean, holding C3? Like, to vote on separately, or are we-
Holding and paying.
Just not paying it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Actually, I like that motion. All right, continue.
Okay, could we have the roll, please?
Is it all in favor with the exception of trustee Levinson being absent? Or do you want a separate?
We can do the roll call, yeah.
Okay. Roll call. Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson is absent. Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
The bills list is passed.
You know, we need to figure out as the acting trustee Levinson.
Yeah.
They'll teach Howard not to be here.
Who wants that? All right, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments. If there's anybody from the public who wishes to speak at this time, please come forward. Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments.
Okay, I have a comment.
Okay. You may.
Through you, through you. Mr. President, I'd just like to request that the resolution for Irvington Avenue, that we agreed to revise or modify, whatever the appropriate term is, be on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay.
And for, actually, for the public's benefit, what we decided upon is that trustee Schnall and myself will continue to be the regular members, and that we will be appointing two alternate trustees, which is both trustee Rosner and trustee Davis Ford, and we're thrilled to have them.
Great.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.[1753.51]